I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, our colors are presented by North Buncombe High School and their instructor is Captain James Sullivan. Will you present the colors, please?
Colors. Attend. Halt! Carry. Ready. Cut. Forward. Ties. Hold. Left. Face. Present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Carry. Ties. Ready. Cut. Right. Face. Forward. Colors. Hope. Dress. Forward.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. One item change is to move the paid lunch equity piece to the action agenda. And then the board chair is going to ask that we move Policy 6341 to a later date. So with those changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as we've noted-
Thank you, is there a second?
Oh, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll have the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are currently in the end-of-year exam period within the elementary and middle schools, and we can always tell that's happening because things, the phones get a little quieter up here at Central Office. Next week, we will begin final exams, that'll take place within our high schools. And a reminder that next Friday, the ninth, will be the last student attendance day for the school year, in addition to be a two-hour early release to allow preparation for the majority of our graduations ahead. In fact, that night, that Friday, we actually have two of our high schools, Community High School and Inca High School, that will graduate their seniors. Speaking of graduation, early college will actually be our first ceremony, and that will take place tomorrow evening at 6:00. It will be held in the Ferguson Building on the AB Tech campus. Middle College will then follow on Monday, the 12th, in Ferguson Auditorium as well on the AB Tech campus. It will begin at 5:30. Our progressive education program, traditionally, they hold their program in the theater at TC Robertson High School. Next Thursday, that event will begin at 6:30. Friday, June the 9th, again, that's the last student day, that begins a weekend stretch of seven consecutive ceremonies. And that evening, Community High School will hold their event at the Ashwell Christian Academy, beginning at 6:00. And then Inca High will graduate their seniors in the downtown Civic Arena, beginning at 7:00 that evening. Saturday morning, and Owen High School is the luckiest school around, and I know somebody, if Meg Turner's up there, she's saying, "Don't say this," but the mornings have been absolutely beautiful. Beautiful weather, blue skies. They will host an outdoor ceremony in their stadium at 9:00 a.m. Reynolds, Irwin, and Robertson, they will graduate their classes of 2017, and all of those will take place in the downtown Civic Arena. They don't take place at the same time, however. They are 11:00, 3:00, and 7:30 p.m., respectively. And while Jack Evans might say this, and is Mr. Evans here? Okay, he's in hiding, but if he were here, he would tell you that we save the best for last, because North Buncombe High School will graduate in the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium, and that will be Sunday afternoon at 2:00. And board members, I know your district staff and students would love to see you attend, and Ms. Payne, you and I will probably have to attend all of them, I think that's our charge that Mr. Dodson left for us, so we better make sure we have our energy. I want to thank Mrs. Lopez and her staff in Human Relations for all of their efforts to make the ribbon-cutting ceremony that took place on Tuesday, for the Williams-Baldwin Teacher Campus, such a success. Coach Roy Williams and his wife Wanda, who are both former Buncombe County school teachers, they were on hand to support this wonderful opportunity as we attempt to offer housing that's affordable to our teachers, and especially those in the first years of their career. And how fortunate we are to have, in this western North Carolina community, to have such generous resources as the Edlin Charities, the State Employees Credit Union, our county government, and Go Forth Builders that support our schools. Recently, an issue came to light regarding unpaid meal debts, and more, I think more importantly, how these debts are addressed in our schools. That has received local attention. And in speaking with Mrs. Payne, who's here tonight, is our outstanding child nutrition director, I asked today, and got this particular number, our total unpaid meal debt, and that's district-wide with all schools, is currently at $42,459. This is an issue, by the way, that has been discussed here with this board for decades. But it's not only Buncombe County, because this is an issue for public schools, not only in the state of North Carolina, but across the country at the national level. But I do believe that I speak very strongly for this board and our district, that we must identify, continue to identify strategies to recover that unpaid debt that do not put our students in the middle. Again, I'm going to repeat that, that I believe I speak strongly for our board and this district, that we must continue to identify strategies to recover the unpaid meal debt that do not put our students in the middle. And so I hope I've clearly said that, because I think it's also important for us as a board to consider the significant amount of time and efforts that our principals, each and every one of them, and our staff, especially in child nutrition, our child nutrition managers, spend throughout the year to contact parents regarding what is a legal debt. Mr. Don Hewitt, is it a legal debt, correct? In many cases, the efforts are focused on completing and then returning a free and reduced meal application. That is an area that is immediately accessible for support. But I also strongly believe that our principals are more than willing to work with their parents and provide support when the communication lines are open. Now, our school meal charge and those payment guidelines, they're posted on the district's child nutrition website, Ms. Payne, but I understand that next fall, we've got new federal regulations that will require all of those guidelines to be put on each and every school website, individual school website. And in addition, hard copies will be sent home next fall to each and every student's home, correct? And that's important. Again, that's trying to get that information out. But finally, I want to sincerely thank the many stakeholders and nonprofit organizations, and I especially want to say thank you to our churches, because they have so many times come forward to work directly with the local community schools to assist with reducing that unpaid meal debt. So a sincere thank you out to the individual stakeholders, parents, as well as those nonprofits and our churches, in helping us address what is not a simple situation. And speaking of the budget, we are in the process of analyzing what was a newly released House budget. We had the Senate about three weeks ago, and so we're now anxiously awaiting how those two models will be put together for a final budget. And so one component that continues to be brought forward and discussed at various arenas here in Buncombe County is our fund balance, and that is a part of our operational budget. So I've asked Mrs. Frisby, our Chief Finance Officer, just to come down and, to the best of her ability, in very simple and basic terms, that we can answer, since each of us have, or hope to have, a piggy bank in our home, what does our fund balance, what it is, and maybe just as important, what it is not? So Ms. Frisby, I appreciate you coming down and talking to us.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. I am the KISS Principal Girl, Keep It Simple, Sweetie. So this is the very simple description of fund balance. So in governmental fund balance statements, the fund balance is composed of five classifications, and these classifications are designed to disclose the hierarchy of constraints placed on how the fund balance can be spent. So it's really important that you know the difference between these five classifications. So for Buncombe County Schools for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016, in our comprehensive annual financial report, our fund balance bottom line was $11.3 million. However, it's important to know that it is broken down in four of the five classifications. So of that $11.3 million, $225,000 of that is restricted by state statute. $518,000 is what is classified as the non-spendable, and this is comprised of funds that cannot be spent, because they are either not in spendable form, or are legally or contractually required to be maintained intact. And some examples of that are inventories and prepaid items. Almost $5.1 million is what is classified as committed fund balance, and this is based on our Board Policy 8100. It's committed for cash flow purposes to enable us to operate. This amount is equal to one month's operating expense, and to put this in perspective, it would be like a family having a savings account, and they would have one month of savings in there to pay all their bills for a month. So the $5.4 million is assigned fund balance, and we have used this amount to appropriate into our 2016-17 budget to balance it. So this money is budgeted for actual expenses. The Board of Education, we expect to use approximately $3.2 million of this $5.4 million by the end of June 30th, 2017. And this is just through good financial stewardship, and with that being said, if those numbers prevail, then we would have about $2.5 million in assigned fund balance to balance the 2017-18 local budget. The fifth category or classification is unassigned fund balance, and this would be fund balance that has not been restricted, committed, or assigned for specific purposes. We currently do not have any unassigned fund balance. So to summarize, approximately one-half of our fund balance, which is the committed classification, is a savings account used for cash flow to do business. The other half is used to balance the current budget, which is the assigned fund balance. And again, we do not have any unassigned fund balance. I hope that's as simple as I can make it.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I have one question. When you were going through the different categories, you said that about $225,000 is restricted by state statute.
Yes.
For what purpose?
It is just for things that, it falls into the same category as the non-spendable things, but there's a formula that our external auditors use to determine that factor, and it's just state statute 115(c)(435).
So we could not tap into it-
We could not tap into that, nor could we tap into the non-spendables, because it's really not cash, so to speak. It's not in a spendable format.
Okay.
The local government commission requires that of every public education in North Carolina.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have-
Sure.
At least one, maybe more than that. The one month, that's our policy, is one month of local current expenses, is that correct?
That's correct. This all pertains to our general budget, which is also called the operational budget.
And, if I look at these numbers, it wouldn't seem to me that it would be very prudent of this board, as it does the things it has to do in terms of the taxpayers' monies, to adjust these numbers in any way. I mean, when I hear what you tell us, and I'm interested in your opinion, when I hear what you tell us, and I look at these numbers, and I know some experience of some things that have gone on in the time that I've been on the board, I'm not sure that there's enough fund balance-
I totally agree.
-versus too much fund balance. Would you agree with that?
I would absolutely agree, 100%.
I mean, based on what you're projecting, it looks like we will, so if we budget, if we expect to use 3,200 of it, or, sorry, $3.2 million of it for this year, which leaves only potentially $2.5 for us to use to balance the budget next year, which is less than what we're using this year, then year after next, we got nothing to work with.
That's exactly correct.
And if, if, if some entity, or there was a situation where that didn't exist anymore, these are recurring, these expenses we're talking about are recurring funds, so the money's got to come from somewhere, or a pretty substantial something, when you start talking about millions of dollars, it had to be cut.
That's correct.
Am I accurate in that?
You're exactly correct.
Okay.
And you all know, our local operational budget is about, the local amount is about 26% of our total budget, so.
If we started talking about cutting millions of dollars out of a skimpy budget already, that would, that's going to impact people, correct, Dr. Baldwin? That's going to impact people. It's not going to impact the science building, it's not going to impact bricks and mortar, it's going to impact people and/or benefits. And I would hope that there's some clarity in this, I appreciate you doing this, but I hope there's some clarity in this for the public, because there's not a bank account sitting with eight, or 10, or 11 million dollars-
Right.
-that's just sitting there, and it's drawing 10% interest, or 5% interest every year, and just growing. That's not what this is.
And if you look in our financial statements, it's broken down, these categories, it's broken down, but oftentimes, when people review this document, they just look at that bottom line, and they think, "We've got $11.3 million that's unassigned, and that's not inaccurate."
That's not the case.
And just to essentially piggyback on that, when you talk about staff and human resources, you've heard me say this in the presentation of our budget, but 87% of our operating daily budget is spent in the area of personnel. And I think we have to be careful that when we start talking about the budget, we realize that in a public school budget, number one, you've got a capital end, and you've got an operational end, and the two don't necessarily mix.
No.
By law, they don't mix, unless that law's changed. But then, you also have to keep in mind that you have recurring funds when you're using the budget, and you have items that are non-recurring, a simply one-time purchase. When you're talking about human resources, 87%, those are recurring funds. If not, we're only giving one-year contracts, and we're already saying, "We may not see you next year." And I don't think that's the basis of a good, sound school system. And the other reason, and I don't want to monopolize time with the board, but the other reason I think this type of discussion is very important, and I anticipate it happening across the state, is we are still faced with an issue that we brought to this board early in the school year regarding the K3 classroom teacher allotment. And there is still, again, with the law, it currently goes into effect one year reprieve, but it goes into effect for 2018-19. So these type of discussions really do need to take place, because if indeed that goes into effect, we'll be looking at every single source of funding here, local, state, or we will be looking at a significant reduction of force.
Other questions or comments?
I have one, please. Ms. Frisby, am I correct in my understanding that with these, the fund balance, if we had unfunded mandates, something similar to what Dr. Baldwin mentioned, too, with the K3 Classroom Teacher Initiative that's looming out there? Or if we had increased an employer match on health insurance, or on retirement, or something like that? Is that money, is the fund balance being used to cover those costs? Or is that something that we cannot predict, we cannot foresee these things, but should it be, you know, something come down the pipeline that we have to meet, are we needing to pull that from the fund balances?
Sometimes. When we do our budget preparation for the county, we try to, as best as we can, incorporate those changes, and if the county funds that, then they're a part of that, but if something changes mid-year, then absolutely, we would have to take it out of fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I want to thank Ms. Frisby for the time and effort that she has given to this issue, and for her willingness to go the extra mile to teach me what this means. I truly appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Go ahead.
In closing, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly recognize seven of our veteran school administrators who have made that decision to retire from their roles as school-based principals and central office leadership. And I want to say this, that each and every one of them have served as incredibly dedicated professionals, and they share a common, share in common, a best practice of putting the best interest of the students first. And together, we have seven retirements. When you put together their experiences, 187 years. That's a lot of experience that's going to be leaving Buncombe County Schools. So if you are here tonight, and I already see a few of you in attendance, if you would stand up, I know all of you aren't here, but I just want to at least publicly recognize you. The first is Mr. John Barber, Principals of SD's. Robin Borden, Principal of Coontz Intermediate. Individuals are here tonight, but Mr. Norm Bossett, who is the Principal of Black Mountain Elementary School, Dr. Jim Brown, who is the Principal of Irwin High School, Mr. Jeff Conard, Principal of Community High School, Mr. Jack Evans, Principal of North Buncombe High School, and I'll tell you, I think this is the first meeting Jack has missed in how many years. I wonder why he did that. But if we could give that group a hand, please, that is our principal. We have one person that was still standing, so she's going to have to stand back up, because in words of Jack Evans, "We save the best for last," maybe? And that is our Director of Elementary and Intermediate School Curriculum, and that's We love you, Buncombe County Schools, as always, your home. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. We now have employee recognition. Stacia?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Hi, everyone. We have several employee recognitions to talk about tonight. It's Mr. Dan Swonar, who's going to be helping us carry off the certificate. We're going to do 20, 30 years all together, and I'm sure everyone is open to call him and he can come down. First up is Michelle Edwards of Sand Hill Venable. Deborah Philprey, give her a round of applause. Stephanie Griffin from North Buncombe High School. Here's Robin Floyd. Lisa Jackson, Kane Creek. And Melissa Metcalf, are you here tonight? Okay. Let's give Melissa a round of applause, even though she's not here. Here tonight? Peg's not here, go ahead, give her a round of applause. From SD's Elementary, Cynthia, come on down. And Debra Warren Jenkins, if you're here, come on down. And everyone I just called is one of our 20-year recognitions tonight. Now, we're going to do our 30-year recognition, so we have a couple of those. Jennifer McCann, she's a school psychologist, she told me she's at several schools, including Weverville Primary. Ms. McCann, come on down. And Debra Powell from Woodfin Elementary, she's our other 30-year recognition tonight, come on down. Come on, one more round of applause. So we have our 20 and 30-year folks here tonight, and we always like to ask them, you know, what's their secret? What keeps them coming back to work every day? And so today, I want to ask you guys, oh, no, you're first, you're first. What qualities, what qualities do you try to bring to school every day, and what qualities do you try to model for your students every day? Are you ready to go first? And so I'm going to just pass you guys the mic, and just repeat your name and where you teach, and what qualities you try to model every day at school.
My name's Michelle Edwards, I teach at Sand Hill Special Need Students, and a positive attitude every day.
Robin Floyd at Avery's Creek Elementary, and I try to bring just a genuine love of learning, that it is a lifelong quest, and just to love to learn every day.
Stephanie Griffin at North Buncombe High School, and I think I'm just the mama, just bringing the mama gene, I guess.
Lisa Jackson at Kane Creek Middle, I'm the Power School Data Manager. So I have them all. I love what I do, and just love seeing everybody and serving.
I'm Cynthia Schultz at SD's Elementary School, and I work for Mr. John Barber, and I bring to my students the Seven Healthy Habits of Children and Adults, and I role-model those every day.
I'm Debra Warren Jenkins from Oakley Elementary, I work with Mr. Dr. Fusco. I just try to always just be happy and give compliments to the children. A lot of them just don't hear it, and they really enjoy and love to hear a compliment, even if you just got to look for something.
Hi, I'm Jennifer McCann, School Psychologist, and I think my role is very different from a teacher in a classroom, but what keeps me going is understanding how important our role as educators, regardless of what position that we're in, and to never underestimate the impact that we can have on children, both those that excel and those that struggle, and also our impact on families and support for each other. So I'm very fortunate to have been in Buncombe County for 20 years, and 10 years before that in other school systems in western North Carolina, and it's been a real pleasure.
I'm Debbie Powell from Woodfin Elementary, I teach Todd A. One, and I think I just try to bring affirmation, attention, and affection for the children I teach, and to instill a love of learning, of reading.
Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you very much for sharing. That everyone loves. If Ms. Swanger could come here, if Dr. Baldwin and Anne Franklin could come here as well. Guys, turn your certificates around so that they're turned up. And we're going to just turn, we're looking at 10 here. Is that good, Tim? Can you see everyone? Okay. Everyone look at Tim and just keep on smiling. No blinking. I want to see happy faces and happy people.
One, two, three.
We actually have two 40-year employees to recognize. So first up, could Karen Perry come down? Since you've been around for 40 years, 40 years with us, you get, you get the spotlight. So tell us a little about what you do and where you teach.
I'm a school social worker, and over the years, I've probably been at every school in the county because they move us around all the time, especially when we do a great job.
And what do you look like at your job?
The fact that I feel like I can make a difference in the life of the students and their homes, their parents as well.
One more round of applause. Deborah Kubiak, if you could come up. She is from Black Mountain Primary. Everyone give her a round of applause. Tell me a little bit about what you do at Black Mountain.
I've done a number of things over the decades, but I'm a reading specialist at Black Mountain Primary, and we teach the whole child from having breakfast club, helping students who don't have support at home with their homework, but also talking with them about problems. And there's times where even taking care of their hair so that they can stay at school safely.
And what do you, what do you love most about your job? And what keeps you coming back every day?
I love the learning that, and the students have always kept me honest, and it's just exciting.
Well, thank you so much. Everyone, oh, don't go anywhere. We're going to do a group picture. Everyone give her a round of applause. And let's have you guys scoot over a little bit more, just to your center, even. All right, everyone look at Tim, and we're smiling. Another round of applause. It's time for good news. Now, we're doing a lovely segue. Always want to do good news. Chariots coming, good news.
Or good news. Tonight, we have the 2017 Wells Fargo North Carolina Principal of the Year for the Western Region with us this evening. Ms. Doris Sellers, along with family members and Dr. Baldwin, recently attended a very special event honoring North Carolina's top administrators. An elementary school principal in eastern North Carolina, Mr. Jason Griffin, was announced as North Carolina Principal of the Year. We were sad for just a few minutes, but then happiness prevailed because Ms. Doris Sellers was recognized as the secondary Principal of the Year for the state and will move forward to a national competition. So we are thrilled to honor. For the best of luck in her endeavor in competing nationally, and I know she would take help from each and every one of you in writing the portfolio, that must be done as well. There are many things that I can say about Ms. Sellers that you would not be surprised. Wonderful educator, professional, caring climate of her school at A.T. Reynolds High School. But we have a little video clip that will let you see her impact, and I think this will We can't hear you, Ms. Sellers.
My school days, to see what they did, and they were, they were my heroes. Good morning. May I have your attention, please, for the morning announcements? I taught math for 19 years before coming into administration, and I think as an administrator, my philosophy is the same as it was as a teacher, and that is that every child deserves my best. We come every day, and we have challenges, we have decisions to make, but when the best needs of a child drives our decisions, those decisions will usually be the best ones. I am proud to say I'm a product of North Carolina public schools. It just gives me a lot of pride to say that what I am giving back here in North Carolina public schools is really what gave me the opportunities that I have today. I'm passionate about education in general. I love Reynolds High School. I love these kids. It is what drives us to come in and fight a lot of challenges every day. There is no doubt about it that our educators, from our teachers, cafeteria, bus drivers, administrative assistants, teacher assistants, everyone is still giving their all, and they give it because of who walks in the door every day, and that's our children. Our motto, our mission at Reynolds High School is committed to the success of all students. And if there is anything that drives me every day, it is that mission right there, that we come in here and we work hard, we work diligently to meet every student. Once again, I hope you have a great Monday. Have a nice day.
Board, and you have special family members here. I think you would love to introduce.
Thank you, Ms. Swanger, and thank you, Board, for just taking a minute tonight out of a really busy agenda to recognize this. It's very humbling because I feel like I am a tiny, tiny portion of the people that I look up here that do this every single day. I always say, there is not a single day that I do anything in our school system, but every day, we do a lot, and I am very grateful to be surrounded by a very large we that surrounds me, that helps us to be successful. And I do have with me tonight, my husband, who, Tony Sellers, who is, goodness, when you take on this job, your spouse takes on this job with you because you basically live at the school, and, and so Rocket Man now lives at the school, too. How I get my husband to wear tights, but in our house, those tights are not tights, they're football pants because he dons the Rocket Man costume every Friday night at the ballgames. And then my dad, who, everybody has a hero, and my dad is, is my hero, and he is with
And there's more. I'd like to introduce Mr. David Ball, our district athletics specialist, who's going to tell you about one more award.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, central office staff, and distinguished guests. It is my honor to recognize Mrs. Doris Sellers, Principal of Reynolds High School, who was recently named the recipient of the 2017 North Carolina High School Athletic Association's Bob Deaton Principal of the Year Award. Mrs. Sellers was recognized and received this award in the Dean Smith Center on May 4th at the annual meeting of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. One principal from 409 member schools of the NCHSAA is selected each year to receive this distinguished honor. Mrs. Sellers was recognized based on her educational leadership at Reynolds High School and her service to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association as a member on the Education and Athletics Committee. This quality of service at both the local and the state level were instrumental in her selection for this award. Congratulations to Mrs. Sellers on being the 2017 North Carolina High School Athletic Association Principal of the Year. We are all joyous with you in this deserved recognition.
She has so many awards, I don't know how we're going to carry them all.
Okay, Ms. Sellers, don't go anywhere. I'm going to need you. Ms. Thorpe, will you come down and join us? You're ready? Okay, great. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, I have learned good teaching is always the very heart and soul of successful student achievement, but it also takes strong support structures to provide the foundation for that instruction. School bus transportation is a vital element to what we do. Every day, some 269 buses travel 17,000 miles all over the county and getting over 16,000 students to school and back home. Folks, that's, that's over half of our student population. And I want to take a pause just to say thank you to the board for what you did in February, when I love the bus month. You got on buses and you rode those buses. And some of the stories and the pictures I saw, I kind of summarized what you told me in three Es. You all told me that it was educational. You told me it was entertaining, but the one thing I heard from all of you was you said it was enjoyable, and I was very glad to hear that. And that was also what the bus drivers told me, and I know they appreciate it. Tonight, we would like to recognize one of our bus drivers as the Driver of the Year with the Tracy Lee Calhoun Memorial Award. I'm going to ask our sponsor of this award, Ms. Kate Thorpe of Asheville Oil Company, members of the North Carolina Petroleum Marketers Association, to come and tell a little bit about the award. Then Ms. Doris Sellers, Principal, A.C. Reynolds High School, will tell you a little bit about this year's winner. Ms. Thorpe.
Thank you. The Tracy Lee Calhoun Memorial Award for School Bus Safety was created 37 years ago by the North Carolina Petroleum Marketers Association to recognize school bus drivers who have made significant contributions to school bus safety throughout the state. As a member of the organization, it has been a privilege for Asheville Oil Company, Smokey Mountain Heating and Air, to present this award for a number of years to honorees in both the Asheville City and Buncombe County school systems. School bus drivers have a tremendous responsibility and deserve recognition for the awesome duty they face every day, transporting our children to and from school. It is our company's hope that this award will focus attention on deserving drivers and bring about a continued dedication to school bus safety in our area. As a family-owned business, it is indeed an honor and a privilege that we can continue to present this award to deserving drivers in the Buncombe County school system.
Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Madam Chair, Franklin, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board and guests, this is a very special award for me tonight. For one thing, my mother was a bus driver for Buncombe County Schools for 30 years, so every time I think about our bus drivers, it makes me think of my mom. But tonight, I have the great honor to introduce another special bus driver in my life, and that is Mr. Marvin Masters. And Marvin, if you'll go ahead and make your way on down here, he has his parents with him tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Masters. So Marvin, if you'll come down while I'm talking about you. Now, this is the easy part to talk about when we're talking about our folks. We presented Marvin Masters for this award because of his ongoing daily care, love, and concern. You come over here and stand beside me, Marvin, for our children. He drives our exceptional children to and from school every day, and he also drives our occupational interns to their jobs every day. He not only drives these students, he looks out for them. These are our children on campus that need someone looking out for them. An example, recently, Marvin noticed something laying at the end of Rocket Drive near Highway 74 that just didn't look right, and he thought, surely that could not be a gun. But rather than driving on by, he was precautious. He got out, he inspected in the item, and sure enough, it was a gun that had fallen off of someone's car. And don't worry, now, he left his TA on the bus, he did not vacate that bus, he did everything just correctly. He immediately called our SRO, who within minutes, under his constant supervision, had that gun in safe hands, where otherwise, it could have been in the hands of children around us. So that's the kind of things that Marvin does every day. When I met that bus, when he returned, all the students were waiting to tell me about Marvin, their hero, and that is what Marvin is. And even though being a bus driver in itself is very important, Marvin goes way beyond the role of a bus driver. He is one of those people who will always say, what do you need? In the mornings, between getting students to school and leaving with his interns, he sits at the front desk and he helps Ms. Brown with morning sign-ins. If he sees anything in disarray on our campus in the morning or late at night when he returns from an activity run, I'll get the text or the call for the heads up so that I'm very aware. If a driver is sick in the morning, he'll often come up with an alternate plan and then text that plan to Mr. Baldwin and Ms. Howard, who are here tonight for this recognition as well. So Marvin is a problem solver, not a problem creator. On those snow mornings, Dr. Baldwin, when you're out making that decision, Marvin is anxiously sitting already at Reynolds High School. He's unlocked the doors, and he is sitting there waiting for your decision, and he will notify the drivers way before anybody else knows. He's waiting on that early morning call, and he will send me a text just to make sure I know, and that I know the condition of our sidewalks with a please be careful as I'm coming in. Marvin is our head ticket taker. He is at every sporting event on our campus. He drives the bus every Friday night for our band and even on weekend trips. Marvin is a VIP on our campus to our students, our athletes, our parents, and especially to me. Mr. Marvin, I am honored to be here to be a part of the Tracy Calhoun Award, and I'm going to ask all of you to join me in congratulating Mr. Marvin Masters as our outstanding Buncombe
If Ms. Lisa Payne could come up now, she is our Director of School Nutrition. She has several really wonderful awards to talk about tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the board. That's a hard act to follow with good news, but I think we've also got some very good news to share celebrating our school nutrition. In our audience, if you folks want to come on down, for the sake of time, I have just people I want to show off. The Golden Key Achievement Award, and we're going to address the Turn Up the Beat Award that we had talked about at another meeting. The Golden Achievement Key Award is a set of criteria designed to recognize the great accomplishments in a single school cafeteria. The purpose of the award is to promote benchmarks of excellence across the state of North Carolina and to honor school nutrition programs maintaining high standards. Weverville Elementary's Dawn Williams, Dawn, if you'll raise your hand so everybody knows who you are. She completed her award, and not only did she receive a local reward tonight, she is competing at the state level. She was chosen to represent us in Greensboro for our School Nutrition Association Conference. We have Sonia Webb from Barnersville. We have Lynn Zabladil from Estes. And we also have John Barber, if you'd like to join her down. Dana Grimes is here, if you'd like to come down and stand with them as well. They're proud principals. We have Michelle Smith from Lester. Chad Upton was not able to be here. And then we have Melissa Bates, who is our school nutrition supervisor and the mentor for these ladies that completed these books. So we're very, very, very proud of these accomplishments, and we look forward to bringing a state prize back in June. And then there's more good news. In the Turn Up the Beat Award, the USDA recently awarded 49 folks in the nation, and we are one of those recipients. The Turn Up the Beat Award recognizes outstanding summer meal programs and their sponsors, and it is truly turn up the beet, B-E-E-T. So it promotes fruits and vegetables. We want to come up with a song for that. We haven't done that yet, but we will. We want to recognize Cheryl Harris. Cheryl, if you'll raise your hand. She is a huge leadership in helping administer that program. And all school nutritions that are committed to serving the summer meals. We want to recognize Stacia Harris and Ben Rickert and Leslie Avriel for their help in marketing our summer feeding program and including our amazing billboards that we had last summer, and we look forward to our billboards in June as well. We also want to recognize Ms. Suzanne Swanger, Mr. Joe Huff, Dr. Tony Baldwin, for all of their support and all of the members of the Board of Education. So I think this is the Turn Up the Beat Award. I will hand the awards out real quickly, but goes to everybody that has supported Buncombe County Schools. So thank you for everything that we do. We look forward to turning up the beat beginning June 14th and serving our summer meals until August 18th.
And that concludes good news for this evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, we're going to keep the good news rolling just a little bit longer and share the good news in our curriculum feature this evening. We certainly never forget the importance of career technical education, and this time of year, we have a lot of excitement because we have students doing fabulous activities through their student organizations. So tonight, we're going to celebrate a few of those accomplishments with our CTSOs. And then we have even an additional award by our CTE Director. So she might share a few words about a recent special activity. Kristy Cheek.
Well, howdy, partners! How's it going? So when I put CTE Goes Country on the board agenda, everybody was like, "What's that all about?" And I decided that we needed to spice up the lives of the board meeting, right? So, we're gonna get down and we might do a little two-step before we're done. So, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, and members of the board. I'm very, very proud to present these students and their advisors as we're gonna get ready. Is somebody two-stepping over there? Yes, see, I hear that, that's awesome. And we're gonna send these students and their advisors off to Nashville, Tennessee, not only to recognize Buncombe County Schools, but four schools as well, and they do exceptional work. So tonight, they have brought along some of their stuff. Mr. Huff is trying to hide it all over here, I just want you to know. But anyway, I have asked them just to come and provide a snippet of information about what they have done throughout the, to get them to go to Nashville, but also with their advisors, some of them have very special awards too. So, parents, if you're here too, when I ask the school delegations to stand, you deserve awards as well. I do want to give a special shout-out to Inca High School. I have to just do this, this is my little promotion, sorry about that. But recently, I went to the FFA banquet, and I was awarded an honorary membership into FFA, so that was very exciting to me. I have a great agriculture background, and now I have an FFA jacket. So I'm very excited about it. I did parade myself around the central office in it. I was gonna wear it tonight with my cowboy boots. My puppies got a little bit excited, and I couldn't do that tonight. So, never fear, I will bring it and wear it at one meeting, so you never have to worry about things like that. So, even though this isn't the Grand Ole Opry stage, it's certainly the Buncombe County School Board stage, and we're gonna get ready to highlight these great students. North Buncombe High School will be featured first, and we will see Ms. Carly Plemmons. She is our new State Officer for FCCLA. We're very, very proud of her, so while she makes her way down, we're gonna ask the North Buncombe delegation to please stand, whoever's going to Nationals. And their two advisors, Amy White and Stephanie Griffin, they received the Master Advisor Award at State Conference, and they will be recognized at Nationals as well. Before Carly speaks, what we're gonna do is we're gonna highlight, we're gonna recognize, and then we're gonna group photo at the end. We're gonna speed this along, so we'll let you sit. We'll introduce Carly, she's gonna speak, and then I'll move on.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Carly Plemmons. I'm currently a rising senior at North Buncombe High School. I've been a part of FCCLA for about two years. When I first joined, I didn't really know much about it or what it stood for. Much of you, I'm sure a lot of you don't either, so I'll explain that a little bit. So FCCLA, or Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, is the only nonprofit student organization in the whole country that is focused mainly on family. So its main goals is to promote leadership skills and community skills while focusing on the main roles of family and career and community leaders. So we do that through character development, leadership skills, community service, and multiple other roles, and you'll see some of the other projects tonight that'll showcase those. So, family and FCCLA is a main thing. That's exactly what we are. All of us are one big family. I know that all of them have my back, and I have all of their backs. My chapter specifically, through the multiple practices that we've had after school, our monthly family dinners, we've become a very tight-knit group. Also, being allowed to become a State Officer, I've had a family of sisters that live across the state as well, and we've become very close. We get to go to training in June in Apex, and we also get to cheer on our chapters in Nationals as well. And so, since I'm from North Buncombe, I'm gonna talk about them for a little bit. Our North Buncombe chapter, we're gonna compete in two competitions. So we have our Carly Pro Team with us today, which is a mock business meeting, and they qualified at States to go to Nationals in Nashville. And then we also have another individual who qualified in Nationals and applied in culinary career, culinary arts, no, culinary arts and money management, sorry, that's a mouthful, and who's also gonna be going to us with Nationals. So I just wanted to say thank you as a part of the North Buncombe chapter and FCCLA as a whole for all of your support and allowing us to be able to do such great things. So thank you.
Talks as fast as I do, see? We like her a lot. So, Inca High is gonna be coming down next, and Lea, I have her name right, because I worked on that, Moore will be representing Inca, and Lea is gonna be presenting her recycle and redesign project. It's called Tie Your Trash to Trends. I think it's very, very cute. Mr. Huff has been definitely looking at it, I can tell you that. Anyway, her advisors, Ann Lynn Hart and Lauren Belts, and I'm gonna let the Inca delegation, if you will stand, there's a lot of them. So, Inca will be recognized at the national event too, because they will receive a gold medal as they grew their chapter in the National Go for Red FCCLA Membership Campaigns. We're very proud of them. So I will turn this over to Lea, and she's gonna tell us about this great getup.
Hi, I'm Lea Moore, and I'm a sophomore at Inca High School, and this is my first year as a member of FCCLA. I participated in star events and chose to do my project on recycle and redesign because I have a concern for the amount of textile waste that enters our landfills each year. Here's a short video on textile waste.
Textile products turns this into this. Every year, more than 25 billion pounds of clothing and textiles are used in the United States. However, only 15% is recycled, which means 85%, or 21 billion pounds, goes directly into landfills or incinerators. That's the equivalent of 260,018-wheelers.
We rely on companies like Goodwill, for example. If you were to bring your stuff to Goodwill and leave it there, they will, ultimately, that material that's not used by them to be reused will end up with a clothing sorter.
Donating clothing follows one of three paths. It is resold in charity thrift shops or in other secondary clothing markets. It's cut into wiping cloths, or it's converted back to its basic fiber elements. Ultimately, 95% of all donated clothing is recycled in one way or another, keeping it out of our landfills.
So, for my project, I decided to recycle ties and reuse them and repurpose them to make a skirt. I created the pattern and constructed the skirt myself with the help of my advisor, and I want to help raise awareness of the amount of textiles that enter our landfills and how people can reduce that and reuse them and create something themselves, or simply give them to a textile bank to where the textile fibers can be reproduced to make new fabrics. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea. I don't think I could have ever thought of doing something like that, so that's very, very creative. Next, we're gonna have, hold on just a second, TC Robertson's, Ms. Lily Diaz, and she's gonna come up, and she will talk about her recycle redesign project. This is a theme, I just need you to know that, all right? And so, she has learned, did something with a kitchenette that she's gonna show you. Now, so that you all know me, I do not cook, so that would be a foreign product to me, because, you know, that's not me. But anyway, her advisor, Jessica Steger, is here from TC and TC Robertson delegation, if y'all please stand too. We're very, very proud of them, and we're gonna turn this over to Ms. Lily.
Hi, my name is Lily Diaz from TC Robertson High School's FCCLA, and the title of my project is Whipping Up Little Chefs. In the past two years of high school, I've been able to take a total of three Family and Consumer Science classes, which have taught me the skills and knowledge needed to complete my project. I've taken Parenting and Child Development, Apparel and Textile Production, and Interior Design. I plan on taking more Family and Consumer Science classes to gain even more skills for my future. These are the eight skills I was scored on. Some of these skills were easier to complete than others. The skill I found most difficult was the addition of constructive hardware, so I had a little help from our very own Mr. Scott, the mechanics teacher. The skill I found easiest to complete was the sketch and construction of the apron, which I will further discuss in a few slides. Here's my storyboard, which shows the transformation of a recycled TV stand into a kid's kitchenette. I collaborated with a community member to make the interactive oven door using a large laser machine, which made it easy to incorporate the use of technology. This is the sketch of my accessory, which was sketched with watercolor paper to construct the child-sized apron. I was able to use old newspaper to make my own pattern, a recycled bed sheet, a sewing machine, and a serger to finish the apron. As I continued to work on this project, it became easier and easier to find recycled items. Some items I used were paint chips, which acted as tiles on a mini backsplash, twistable Gatorade lids that were used as knobs on the range, and icing lids that were used to resemble burners. The total time I spent constructing the kitchenette was approximately eight and a half hours. The total cost of the project was just under $18, while other play kitchens can range from $150 to $250. Here's the final product, and when we return from the national competition in Nashville, Tennessee, we will either raffle off the play kitchen to a staff member or donate it to the early childhood education class. Overall, this year has been very busy, and we've accomplished a lot, from environmentalism, nutrition, and fashion design, to early childhood education and FCCLA promotion. We have increased membership to start, and started our very first chapter Instagram and informed our school about our purpose. Just to think, two years ago, TC Robertson FCCLA chapter was non-existent, and this year, all nine of our competitors qualified for Nationals, and we will be kicking up our boots in Nashville, Tennessee in 30 days, eight hours, and approximately 27 minutes, but who's counting?
That could compete with the playhouses that we build, right? So, I just want y'all to know, we always have opportunities for you to get young kids involved, so I'm just gonna tell you that. Next and finally, we'll showcase Irwin High School, and our speaker tonight will be Haley Marlowe, and she will be showcasing another recycle and redesign project. Now, when I went to Irwin, I saw this not only in the office there, and then when I went over there another time, I saw it in another place, and then I saw it in another place, so I decided it had wheels and worth moving around. But honestly, I want her to leave it here, because I think it's the coolest thing, and I wanted to take it home with me. So, while Haley, she's down already, she'd be just there, but Irwin delegation, if you will please stand. And I'm gonna say, so first of all, Katie Grogan, who is, she got special permission to come out of the house, she's had a new baby, so we want to just say thank you, you're like entertainment for her right now. But Ms. Lacey Davis, she is- But Ms. Lacey Davis, she is a rock star for the FCCLA world, and she was presented at the state conference with the State Spirit of Advising Award, which I was told by a very good source, that is the highest award one can be bestowed in FCCLA. So, she will also be recognized at the national conference as well. So, excellent leadership from Irwin High School, and congratulations to all of you. And now, we'll hear from Haley.
My name is Haley Marlowe, and this is my first year in FCCLA. I wanted to get involved in a club, an active club, so I began FCCLA. Using my Interior I and II classes, drafting, and a home metal shop, I created a unique and chic outdoor furniture piece. My goal was to use as much recycled material as possible. My title was Marlowe Metal Restoration. And then, I, this is called the Barrel Bottom Chair. So, my chair was very friendly as cost-wise, it only took me $31.16. I logged over 20 hours to get it complete. Marlowe Metal Restoration saves energy, preserves natural resources, reduces pollution, and preserves landfill space. It's estimated that 75% of our waste is recyclable, but only 30% is recycled. This will start my photo storyboard. Here, I measured lines to cut with a plasma cutter to get the shape of the chairs, and I grinded to smooth the rough edges. I applied rivets and applied a shrunk sheet metal ridge so that the seat would fit properly inside the barrel. Next, I had to prep my barrel for painting by sanding and cleaning the barrel after I painted. Then, I began constructing my cushion by cutting a ply, a piece of plywood in a 22-inch diameter circle, applied foam, glued, and stapled my printed fabric, and then applied a rubber gasket around the edge. This is my next project, the Barrel Bottom Couch. My goal is to complete this piece as an accessory design for my senior project next school year.
You can leave that there, because Mr. Bryant's going to have to come and sit in it, I do believe, right, Mr. Bryant? I knew that, see? So, these are outstanding students and outstanding leaders that do great work every day in their classrooms, and what a, just a great shout-out to work. Lacey has like beat me over the head, so I always told her she could do this, this is really embarrassing for me, but I will let her.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to take over the mic just for a second. One thing that I'm extremely proud of is that we have a national award winner here with us tonight. Ms. Kristy Cheek, our CTE director, has won the National FCCLA Outstanding Administrator Award. And this is big news, because this is across the nation, 50 states, Virgin Islands, and she won in Buncombe County, and I am thrilled. A fairly quick turnaround. She won this at state, and then Nationals contacted me to get a photo, a video, and get, get on with getting recognized in Nashville. But one thing I'm always amazed at, Ms. Cheek, is that she truly is a product of CTE, and I've heard her say multiple times about the impact of her marketing teacher and taking her to a national competition, and how it, you know, it just has come kind of over for her to be the CTE director. And that, to me, is what keeps me going as a fax teacher. I got a little award at state and Nationals, but she's getting a huge award on the opening ceremony stage, and I'm, I'm truly ecstatic and honored. And I think we're going to show this little video of, of Ms. Kristy Cheek. So, again, another round of applause is a big deal.
Our CTE director, Kristy Cheek, provides outstanding support for our teachers and students. She encourages us to become leaders and provides the tools and instructional support we need. Ms. Cheek leads the way in CTE for Buncombe County schools. She oversaw the opening of the first STEM school in western North Carolina, and we are renovating six food labs for our family consumer science program. Plus, she fosters strong business partnerships that benefit students. Ms. Cheek, thank you for your support and enthusiasm.
So, at the FFA banquet, I cried. I cry every time I have to speak, because this is why you come to work every day, this right here. Now, it really is time to put the stars on display, as all these students and teachers will come. And Board, if they're representing your school district, I would like you to come too, and have your picture taken, Dr. Baldwin, everyone, let's just all get in a picture tonight, okay? I truly am blessed, they're blessed, and I thank them, everyone. Thank you. When y'all leave, you can take two step out, if you don't want to stay anymore. I know, isn't that cool?
We don't remember these meetings going long in the day, but for a very different reason. This is nice.
Thank you.
This is good.
It's got flat back, and yet it just got bits around it, so it felt nice. I love it.
And if the good news, I'll pick it up.
That is so cool. That is so cool. Sunday at 3:00.
Okay.
That's just Robin, Board.
Suzanne. Suzanne, are you calling Robin, Board, up, or am I?
Do we have public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have three public comments tonight. First up is Marcella Montgomery.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baldwin, and honored guests. My name is Marcella Montgomery, and I'm a fifth grade member of the Student Lighthouse Team at Coontz Intermediate School. Today, I would like to share a few reasons why I like wearing school uniforms. The first reason I like wearing school uniforms is that they are easy to choose, which goes well with Habit One, Be Proactive. In the mornings, when I choose my outfit, it would normally be a hard decision to make, because I like style. Uniforms make it easy to decide on an outfit that shows professionalism. We can also display our unique style with accessories, colorful leggings, and cool socks. The second reason I like wearing school uniforms is that they build confidence, which supports Habit Four, Think When Win. I understand that some people find it hard to be confident in themselves because of the negative comments they may receive on their outfits. Wearing uniforms changes all of that by leveling the playing field for all. Kids find confidence knowing everyone is equal and known better than anyone else, because we are all equally dressed as professional as one another. My third and final reason for enjoying school uniforms is the increase in safety and improvement in student discipline, components on Habit Six synergize. We feel safe at Coontz, and we know that discipline over outfits is weakened, because students are behaving better with uniforms. We don't feel pressured to dress according to someone else's standards, therefore making other students feel less confident in what they are wearing. All students feel confident, because they all look professional and polished. Thank you for taking your time to listen to something valuable to our school community.
Public comment is Doug Montgomery.
Hard to follow that.
Yeah.
Meeting, members of the Board, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, and staff. First, I'd like to tell you that we, as a community, appreciate your service and education. We really appreciate that. My name is Doug Montgomery, I'm a parent of a fifth grader, Marcella's my, my daughter. I'm also on the Parent Advisory Council. Okay, pardon me for reading, but I have three minutes. While on the advisory council, I get feedback about the uniforms. Many parents report just how nice it is not to worry about their child, what their child will wear. And it also reduces, according to them, the morning clothing arguments have, have reduced quite a bit. The uniforms have also saved them money throughout the year by not having to purchase multiple expensive outfits, and most importantly, that their child looks good and seems more confident. Now, I do have a degree in sociology, but I do remember my first class in sociology, the professor asked us to write a paragraph and argue for or against school uniforms. After a very lengthy discussion, the professor said, you are all missing the big picture. Everyone was stating, I, I don't like this, I don't like that, but the professor interrupted and said, what about the school as a whole? What are the benefits to all the students as a whole? Today, many of us focus on our child alone, and I absolutely understand that, but I want the best for my child also. I am in favor of school uniforms for the fact that it enhances the learning environment in positive ways. It is no surprise that children at any age are impressed with the social aspect of dress. If we can reduce that aspect and get their minds focused on learning and interactions with others, the school uniform can put some of these social distractions aside. Research and experience have shown that a more formal dress standard has a positive impact on students' frame of mind. Uniforms have a psychological effect on students as well. That effect is the same for the military or sports teams. The uniform creates inclusiveness, a sense of unity that we are all in this together. Many universities have conducted tens of thousands of surveys, not to the parents, but to students. It's not shocking that 90% of the students do not want to wear uniforms. But by the end of the survey, students report that they realize the positive benefits the student, the uniforms provide, such as students worry less about how they or others look, because uniforms put all students on a more equal social footing. The uniform remove, the uniforms remove this distraction. Students report they also feel confident and increased self-esteem, because it's just one less thing for them to worry about. Many argue that uniforms take away freedom of expression or individual loss of identity. If anything, uniforms let the students be themselves without having to worry about being judged. My daughter is not defined by her uniform or by her street clothes.
Thank you.
Public comment is Karina Barnes.
Thank you, Board members, for listening to Community Concerns today. I was thrilled to hear Dr. Baldwin address the lunch debt issue. My name is Karina Barnes, and I currently have two children enrolled in Buncombe County schools. My daughter started kindergarten at Haw Creek Elementary and is currently finishing her junior year at AC Reynolds High School. My son is a kindergartner at Haw Creek Elementary. My family has proudly been part of this community for nearly 12 years. We love our schools, and we love our community. I'm speaking today to bring attention to the practice of lunch shaming in Buncombe County schools. Lunch shaming is the practice of bringing negative attention to a child, whether intended or unintended, due to debt or lack of funds for cafeteria purchases. Examples include not allowing children with lunch debt to participate in Field Day, prom, graduation, as well as offering an alternative lunch to those students who have reached $25 in cafeteria charges. Myself and many in the community feel that the collection of student debt needs to remain between a parent or guardian and the school administration. There should be no reason to punish or exclude children for financial circumstances beyond their control. Even the mere threat of punishment or exclusion is unacceptable. The practice of lunch shaming came to my attention two weeks ago, when I was informed in a letter home that any child that owed lunch money, spring pitcher money, or library books at the end of the school year would not be allowed to participate in Field Day at Haw Creek Elementary. At the time, I didn't know what lunch shaming was, but I knew it wasn't right. I initially reached out to the principal to express my concern and displeasure with this decision. It was after my conversation with the principal that I started a GoFundMe campaign, which I received close to $7,000 in donations from over 225 people in just under two weeks. While we realize this amount does not yet cover the balance, we hope it eases the burden, and we'll continue, and we will continue our efforts. Through our research, we've come to realize that lunch shaming is a national problem affecting both students and schools across the country. Anti-lunch shaming campaigns are happening all over the United States, as people are becoming aware of the practice. New Mexico has recently passed anti-lunch shaming law, and other states are following suit. New Mexico schools are no longer allowed to punish or shame individual children for lunch debt. An anti-lunch shaming bill has just been introduced by North Carolina Representative Cecil Brockman, who states, and I quote, "Lunch shaming has become a prevalent issue across the nation, where school administrators will single out the kids who cannot afford a meal or owe a debt. This can be devastating to a child's self-esteem. It is time to put this issue front and center and do the right thing." The USDA is now requiring that by July 1st, 2017, all school administrators participating in the Food and Nutrition Service National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program to have in writing meal charge policies and policies addressing the collection.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment tonight.
Thank you. So, um...
We're moving on to the action portion of the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Budget Member Number Eight. Are there questions from Board members concerning this amendment? All right, Ms. McMahon. I never understand why you staff members sit in the tree at the very top of this place, knowing that you're going to have to come down here.
They're optimists.
Are they?
Exercise.
Right. So, Ms. Frisbee, I understand that when we do these budget amendments, most of this is, if not all of it, has already happened, and we're just sort of endorsing what is required of us. But it's still an opportunity, to me, for learning about what's happening with our budget and our finances, and, and a little... $25 in cafeteria charges. Myself and many in the community feel that the collection of student debt needs to remain between a parent or guardian and the school administration. There should be no reason to punish or exclude children for financial circumstances beyond their control. Even the mere threat of punishment or exclusion is unacceptable. The practice of lunch shaming came to my attention two weeks ago when I was informed in a letter home that any child that owed lunch money, spring pitcher money, or library books at the end of the school year would not be allowed to participate in Field Day at Haw Creek Elementary. At the time, I didn't know what lunch shaming was, but I knew it wasn't right. I initially reached out to the principal to express my concern and displeasure with this decision. It was after my conversation with the principal that I started a GoFundMe campaign, which I received close to $7,000 in donations from over 225 people in just under two weeks. While we realize this amount does not yet cover the balance, we hope it eases the burden and will continue, and we will continue our efforts. Through our research, we've come to realize that lunch shaming is a national problem affecting both students and schools across the country. Anti-lunch shaming campaigns are happening all over the United States as people are becoming aware of the practice. New Mexico has recently passed anti-lunch shaming law and other states are following suit. New Mexico schools are no longer allowed to punish or shame individual children for lunch debt. An anti-lunch shaming bill has just been introduced by North Carolina Representative Cecil Brockman, who states, and I quote, "Lunch shaming has become a prevalent issue across the nation where school administrators will single out the kids who cannot afford a meal or owe a debt. This can be devastating to a child's self-esteem. It is time to put this issue front and center and do the right thing." The USDA is now requiring that by July 1st, 2017, all school administrators participating in the Food and Nutrition Service National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program to have in writing meal charge policies and policies addressing the collection.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment tonight.
Thank you. So, um...
We're moving on to the action portion of the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Budget Amendment Number 8. Are there questions from Board members concerning this amendment? All right, Ms. McMahon. I never understand why you staff members sit in the tree at the very top of this place knowing that you're going to have to come down here.
They're optimists.
Are they?
Exercise.
Right. So, Ms. Frisbee, I understand that when we do these budget amendments, most of this is, if not all of it, has already happened and we're just sort of endorsing what is required of us. But it's still an opportunity to me for learning about what's happening with our budget and our finances. And, and little bits of money get moved here and there and it's not really, it doesn't matter much, but then there are big pieces of money, and then I notice. And so, what I try to do is kind of follow the logic within the budget amendments to understand what's happening. So, when I follow the logic of the big chunks of money here, E, is, it looks to me like we are being required to move funds from classroom materials and textbooks, over half a million dollars into funds that would be for teachers so that we can pay the charter schools. I mean, am I interpreting this correctly in that we are going to have to pay out $531,000 to the charter schools? Is that what's happening here, or am I misinterpreting?
No, what we do is, we have the ability to transfer funds from most categories, and this is what we do to maximize our state dollars.
Right.
We support the instructional supply allotment with local dollars. We give those dollars to the schools, 80% of it, or 90% of it, in August, so they're able to go ahead and start buying their supplies and things for the students because oftentimes we don't have our state budget by then. So, they're not having to wait on the state money to come before they can buy instructional supplies. So, we use all of the state instructional supply money and we put that in PRC 10, which that is where we pay for certified teachers. And what we do is we put all of our high-paid teachers in the PRC 001, which is a position allotment, and those salaries are guaranteed, and then we pay the rest of them out of PRC 10, which is state.
But then in the local current expense fund, we've got charter schools, $531,000.
That is an adjustment in the local current expense. So, what happened there is when we, the Board approved the original budget in October, or maybe it was September, I'm not sure which month, we estimated on the number of charter schools. We didn't get our actual number of charter school students that were being transferred out until November. So, this is the adjustment for the difference between those, and that is the local portion that we have to pay to the charter schools.
And the line item that that's coming out of is called Dollars for Teachers.
Yeah, that's the local support for Dollars for Teachers, so...
So, it comes out of Dollars for Teachers and goes into the charter school.
Right, but that, we always overestimate those allotments, just so we have enough to cover when we do get the final numbers for the charter schools. They were very late in getting us the numbers this year, and we just didn't make the adjustment until this budget amendment.
They were late, who was "they"? This state?
The state. What they do is they rely on the numbers from the charter schools, the actual numbers, not projected numbers.
Right.
And so, the actual numbers did not come down until November.
They're actually, yeah.
So, that's, that's the local appropriation, that the per pupil amount that we pay for the charter school students.
Uh huh, okay. And, and so, this is, even though this is a budget amendment, it was sort of in line with what you expected in terms of what we would be paying to charter schools. This is not over and above what we anticipated to be?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay.
Because it did not change the bottom line of our budget. It's just, you know, you start on budget and then you have to get it to the actual amounts. And since we're in June, we're, we're close to the end of the fiscal year.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's confusing.
Always is.
I want to do something fun, like CTE.
You can two-step going back up if you want.
This is fun, but you know what I mean.
Oh, don't go away.
Yeah, I'll do the two-step.
Oh, don't go away, Ms. Frisbee.
Oh, okay.
We have another question.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, Ms. Frisbee. In the narrative of this document, it refers to PRC 010, Dollars for Teachers.
Yes, sir.
In the graph, in the chart, it refers to it as Dollars for Certified Personnel.
It's the same thing.
Same thing.
It's teachers, yes.
Certified Personnel is a broader category, I would think, but which is correct? Dollars for teachers?
Dollars for teachers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That actually, the PRC 10, 010 is the Charter of Accounts description, so we'll, we'll make that clarity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from Board members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 8 as presented.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right along. Thank you, Ms. Frisbee. We're going to the Valley Springs Middle School Roof Replacement Areas A1, A2B, C1, C2D, G, I, N, P and Q. Authorization of the award contract. Do any of Board... Sorry?
I just said alphabet soup.
It, well, I was thinking about that, too. Do any Board members have questions for Mr. Fairley? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the action agenda is the A.C. Reynolds High School Roof Replacement Areas B, E, F and G. I wonder if we had a, what are those things that fly around?
Drones.
Drone, if we had a drone and we went over Reynolds High School and it would have at B, E, F and G, so we would, as a layman, know where that goes. Yeah, right. Is that right there, Clark Wyatt? Okay, back to serious business. I need a motion to approve. Do any Board members have questions about this project?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment and...
Do you want the drone to fly over Reynolds High School?
Yeah, that. No, I just want it to fly over me. I, I just find it interesting that we continue to have to be in the situation of rebidding and because of the, the market that we are in at the moment, and I just want to recognize that I know what a hassle that is, and I appreciate the hard work of Mr. Fairley and the others who have to go through this process over and over and over to get projects down into our budget range, and, and I appreciate that, and I know, I know it's a hassle.
It's due, we all. I would enter, any other questions? I'd entertain a motion to approve this budget item for roof replacement on Reynolds High School.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this roof replacement.
And is there a second?
I'll say.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is Community High School. The authorization to proceed the site work for the modular relocation. Any questions for Mr. Fairley on this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
We need to change that motion.
Excuse me, the attorney's acting here.
It also needs to state that authorize the superintendent to sign the contract.
Okay. Mr. Donahue wants us to make an addition here, that we add the sentence that the superintendent has the authorization to...
Sign the contract.
Sign the contract.
The reason is, this is a time-sensitive project and we don't want to have to wait to the next board meeting.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve this item with the addition.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we're on Discovery, I did that right, right?
Yes, yeah.
The Discovery Academy Phase 4, procuring furnishings for the Discovery Academy. We are adding Year 4 to this site, your students of Year 4 to the site. The motion to, to issue a purchase order to PBI Commercial Interiors for Furniture for Discovery Academy Phase 4 in the amount of $110,000. Are there questions for Mr. Fairley?
Was all of this, all of the furnishings included on the state contract? Is that where the, the estimates were derived from? Tim?
I knew you were going to make another staff member walk all the way down. Two-step, two-step.
This, this contract, if you will, this purchase order will involve, I believe, three different cooperative purchasing agreements, one of them being the state contract. But there's, there's plenty of others out there, and we kind of cherry pick between them to get the best price and get the furniture we want. So, state contract is one, but there's US Communities is one, we use GSA. Quite a few are out there and available for us.
Okay. But the other, the alternatives to the state contract did, in fact, provide better numbers, if you will, pricing for the furnishings that you...
Better pricing or had furniture that was available through these other cooperative purchasing agreements that weren't available through the state contract. It used to be 10 years ago that everything was state contract, but they have really honed it down and haven't updated very much, so...
And our intent is to get this furniture delivered over the summer and have it in place for the fall classes?
That's the intent for the start of school, that's why we're coming to you now. It's tight.
Okay. There would not be if they had arrived early. We do have warehousing space available to store if that were to be the case.
The vendor will arrange for delivery and is fully responsible for storing it and delivering it when we ask them to, and assembling it and putting it in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fairley?
I just want to know if he got the business card of the young lady that was creating the barrel chairs? Perhaps future furnishings?
Fit right in.
Let's keep it local.
Right, okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on action agenda is the Coontz Intermediate School Uniform Policy. I believe Ms. Ward is prepared to make that presentation to us. That's an excuse, Ms. Ward, it's an excuse. You just didn't want to be down here with us.
This is new to me, how you're doing this. We have a PowerPoint and a video, and there it is, all right. And he is a, he is a member of our School Uniform Committee, so I ask him to attend as well, and he did a lot of the work on this presentation that you're going to see. So, good evening, Madam Chair Franklin, Dr. Baldwin and members of the School Board. Coontz Intermediate is nearing completion of its two-year school uniform project. And this is not just a private school uniform, it is a 21st century public school uniform. And so, what I, who's doing that? They need to go back. So, I'm going to keep talking?
Please.
If that's okay, I know that you wouldn't mind that. We were going to show you what our recommendation is, if approved, the 1718 school year uniform. And the collars are navy white and gray for the tops and the bottoms. And you need to go back. You don't have the updated version. Could you pull it up? Come again? That Leslie Averill asked for? No, it's not. Oh, psh, can't, you can't pull it up. Okay, I'm so sorry. We just spent a lot of time on that?
Speak into your mic.
Oh, fiddle, okay. So, if you go on our website, you see the tabs across the top and you see their school uniforms, and so, when you click on that, this information comes down, and so, what I was going, go back. So, what I was going to show you was the 201718, are you laughing at me?
No, I am so in tune to what's going on. When technology plays, everything is crazy.
The CT Coontz Intermediate School Dress Code, this is what families would be looking for, and also the PE wear. So, what we were hoping that you would see is what that uniform would be, and it's very concise in that if you are looking for Lanzen, you would click right there on, right beside the description of the Lanzen uniform. But then, if you go to the next slide, we also presented, because I think Mr. Quinn had asked about, or several of you had asked about, what about other big box stores and what are they offering? I didn't, I was not comfortable doing that because their prices changed quite a bit with sales that they have on. So, I will tell you that two weeks ago, this is what their prices were. We also did Walmart, but they just flew right in between the radar between these two. So, we didn't add that one, so you could just see this in a larger font. So, that's, that's the tops and the bottoms. So, if we then move on to the next slide, the other information I wanted to share with you is our enrollment. You had asked previously about discipline and enrollment, what data do you have that you could share with us? So, within these two years, we can tell you that this school year, we gained a position, which means our enrollment increased. And we've just been told that it is predicted that our enrollment will increase by 50. So, if we're at 704 right now, they're looking for us to be about 758, 757 for this next school year. In the last two months, I've had 14 families come in for a tour. They do not see uniforms as a concern. It's either an appreciation or they're just already familiar with it. They've had uniforms in the past, or they're saying, "Good." So, I wanted to make you aware of the enrollment. You, you, there. So, with the, the other information that we could provide for you is Student Choice Days. We didn't require uniforms every single day, but for example, the PTO provided four different days where we had global themed Fridays, and it was like Mardi Gras, Character Book Day, Earth Day, Music in Schools. And we probably had, I want to, I'll go as far as to say one-third, but I feel more comfortable saying one-fourth of our student population participated in those events. The other one we had was a jean day, and this was rare, wear jeans for rare jeans day. We have a student that has a rare jean, and we had asked to do a little fundraiser, a dollar, and I charged the faculty $5, and still, it was like $275 total. So, when you have over 700 kids in a school and it's jeans, I just expected more than that, but they just, they just wear that uniform, it's just not an issue for them. Then, we go to discipline. When I spoke to you last, and I think, Mr. Quinn, we were, Queen, we were talking about this, when we looked at the referrals that we had, inappropriate language and disruptions were the two that related closely to what a child was wearing, their exterior presentation. And so, you can see in 1415, the inappropriate language, cutting someone down because of what they were wearing, was it that number? And disruptions to the learning environment, again, based on what a child was wearing, how they looked, how they presented themselves. So, 1516, and this year, 16 and 17, you see that we've had, you know, a decrease in that. So, this is something we want to continue to look and to see if it continues. We're excited. Here's the biggie, and that for me personally, is the peer pressure versus the uniform. I've said it before... said it before, and you've heard it earlier. We are three diverse elementary schools coming into one intermediate school. One of the major goals for our faculty four years ago, when they started this project, was trying to have those three elementary schools, very distinct elementary schools, blend, merge into one school. Because they were having difficulty with that. We wanted to become Coontz Leadership School. That was where we wanted our focus, for students to engrain within themselves, being the leader of themselves and who they are. You know, ideally, a student's external appearance should not play a large part in how a child is perceived or accepted by their peer group. But yet, it is a prime factor toward their acceptance by others. There are more instances of students trying to look like the popular group or what social media portrays. Being a kid is very difficult. An intermediate school is one of the toughest. Everyone wants to fit in in some way. And we're not looking to hinder a child's individuality, but to introduce students to a level playing field, where students are free to learn and grow with each other without the stigma of their outerwear. We believe, we being the faculty and staff, that our school has evolved with uniforms. This year, we refined the policy. And next year, with your recommendation, that uniform will be simplified even more so for our standard mode of dress. The school uniform is now a part of our culture. It is a model for empowering kids to find their identity, not look to the surface, but from the inside. I do want to leave you with this one thing. The one negative comment I hear from parents is that it's not all the way through K8. So, turning to the next slide. I had a PE teacher come to me a couple of weeks ago, and she said, "I just found out a really good thing about uniforms." What is it? She said, "Right now, we got Valley Springs outside on the fields, and we've got community on our softball fields. We have recess going on, and we have PE going on, but we can quickly discern where our students are. Are they near those community members? Are they messing with those Valley Springs kids? We can see them just like that." And that's what we wanted to have happen. The other thing is when the Valley Springs kids are wanting to come in, at the end of the day, they want to see their old teachers or their friends, we can quickly see who they are. And we're just going, huh-uh. You go back. So we wanted to present that aspect of the safety issue. And at this time, we have a video.
I think the uniforms promote leadership in that it makes the kids feel like they're leaders. They come to school and they, they don't feel like they're dressing just to go hang out with friends or hang out on the weekend. They dress for their job. And just like with adults, if we are dressed for success, then we're going to be more likely to be successful.
It's easy because, you know, it doesn't matter really how other people think of you. It just, we're all wearing the same thing, and that helps. I mean, we're all diverse, but it helps bring us closer together.
Well, I like uniforms, and it's an easier way for me to get ready for school, easier.
So you don't have to worry about what you're wearing? And like, you don't have to worry about what other people are wearing? Like, you, are you unique, even though you're not wearing what you want? Like, you still, you have to think that you're still unique inside.
I feel like it's easier to get up in the morning and just know what I'm going to wear, and it makes my routine much easier and faster.
Before, I would, it would take a while to get dressed, to pick out what to wear, because there would be like a whole bunch of options in the uniforms. It's, it doesn't really matter, because everyone's going to be wearing the same thing.
There's a routine in it, where as long as, you know, we, it's kind of created this personal responsibility of, are all your clothes clean for the week? And so we have to make sure that that's part of the routine, because we only bought a certain amount of uniforms, which has actually impacted us, I think, in a positive way, because we're not having to worry about going through clothes as quickly. So we're not doing as much laundry, which is nice. But it's also making her more personally responsible for her wardrobe.
I feel like it's leveled the playing field for the kids. There are not as many differences that they can pick out. My first year teaching here, five years ago, I remember a little girl getting picked on because she was wearing a shirt and a skirt that were different brand names. And I remember thinking, this is just crazy. This is not what you're here for, and this is too small to be picking on someone about. So I definitely see a difference in the relationships, the positivity of the kids, and the way that they're able to interact with one another, because now the clothes issue is off the table. They can just look at what the person is like.
And like, it's kind of nice wearing, like I said earlier, it's kind of nice knowing what you're just going to wear. And like, my mom, when, whenever I come, like downstairs to eat breakfast, she's like, "Okay, what you're going to wear today?" And I know exactly on the top of my head what I'm going to wear.
They don't rely on their clothes or their appearance to be the way in which they stand out.
Not showing who they are through the certain labels that they are wearing. They're having to come up with another way to label themselves. And this is going to show out in their leadership roles and responsibilities. It's going to change the way that they think. And in the real world, some of them will have jobs that require uniforms. So this is no different than a, an adult who has to go to a job and they have to wear a uniform on a daily basis.
At first, I thought they were going to be terrible. And then I would be uncomfortable, and I'd be like, ew, I don't like this.
When I started wearing them, it was very comfortable. And like, you could do a bunch of movement and stuff like that, whether, like, whether you were like running, or you were like speed walking, or like playing basketball or something, you could play in like any of your uniforms.
They're cutie pies. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I know that there had been some surveys that had gone out, actually throughout this pilot. And I just wondered what the purpose was and the process on, on how you got those surveys to parents, what was decided on for questions, and how the data was collected.
Very good. The purpose of the survey last year was to evaluate the implementation of the uniforms. This year, in this survey, it was to improve our process. That was the intent. So we had like six questions. They were yes or no. It was on a scale of one to 10. We presented it to fifth grade and to our car rider parents. But what we have found over these two years is that if we just give it to them, or we put it on our website, or I do the telephone call, we're not going to get a large response back. We need them to come into the school. So on June 6th, we have the Title I parents coming in, multiple languages. We're going to have interpreters there. And we'll be able to sit down with them and, and have them fill out this survey. So it's not just a one-time survey, but it is over a period of time. The, the purpose in this is that it's a pulse check. It's, I'm looking in my notes here, because I lost my place. We, we have used historical data because we're just a two-year school. So in the past year and the year before, we're still bringing that up, and we're comparing as to whether there's a change or not. In the data we have right now, with the students, it's 50/50. And that's, that's fine with me. They've been on this earth 10, 11, and 12 years. With parents, it still maintains, as it has for the past two years, a 70/30 split. The questions that we were asking, I can just very quickly, is getting ready in the morning easier for your children? As a rising fifth, sixth grade parent, do you like the uniform policy? Is the communication from the school about the uniform policy clear and concise? Are you satisfied with having the option of purchasing a top with or without the logo? And when we began this journey, our goals included uniting the three elementary school districts and creating an educational environment free from competition and peer judgment. Is our uniform policy accomplishing these goals for your student? And the majority was saying yes. But that question, as I continued to look at, it has about two questions, possibly three in that one. So I wished I'd have done a better job of breaking that down. So you've got this evaluation, but then you've got these others that are more about the process of the uniform. And, you know, what are their thoughts on that?
Other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Mrs. Board, are there any financial incentives or help for families who feel they cannot afford the uniforms?
We still have $1,000 from Lands' End, because a lot of our ask-risk population loves that logo. And so we have been able to help anyone that has notified us. And there's a variety of ways that they can notify. They don't, they don't come knocking on my door. But through our social worker and our counselors, through community members, we find that information very easily. The other thing that we pointed out in the survey is that they can also get these items at Target, Walmart, what was the other one?
Old Navy.
Old Navy. So at $6, $7, I think we're, we're reaching with that group that it is accessible to them. And yes, we will always have funds available. One thing I didn't mention was our clothes closet. And I got to tell you, I started in high school, moved to middle school, and now I'm in the intermediate school. The clothes closet has always been, no kid wanted an item from the clothes closet. I'll just put it that way. And so, but now, you know, the kids will come up and say, they'll come to the office and say, "We're going out for recess. I didn't wear a coat today. Can I go get a sweatshirt?" Or they come up and there's water all over them, because they and their friend, you know, accidentally hit their water cup at lunch, and, and they need, "Can I go get a pair of shorts?" So, and they're also very good just to bring them back at the end of the day. It's, it's a nice phenomenon that we've noticed, and is greatly appreciated, and shows that maturity in these children.
How did the uniform swap go? I, I believe y'all were doing a, a uniform swap after this session.
We did it through Lollipops. And of course, we have the uniform closet as an option as well. But I tried to keep that, I did not do an on-campus swap, as I think you may be thinking about, because we are a two-year school, and there's not that continuity if we were K4 or 912. So we, we've seen them at, what's the place up on the corner? Okay, not Salvation Army, Goodwill. We've seen them at Goodwill. We've asked them to go to Lollipops. They also provide cash back to sixth grade parents, you know, because they're moving on. But with fifth grades, they, fifth grade parents moving to sixth, if they've grown out of them, et cetera, they have, they've got the swap going on there for gently used items.
I have one other question. This may be a rhetorical question. Marcella articulated very well about the relationship between uniforms and the Leader in Me program. As administrators and as a faculty, would you concur with that, that those two are tied together? Or do you see the Leader in Me as a separate entity that has contributed to the decline in referrals, for example, for disrespect, et cetera?
I would say again, that when this faculty started four years ago, they were reading the book, The Leader in Me, and they were having discussions. What came out of that was the uniforms. So one begat the other. But now, having done uniforms for two years, we do see it going hand in hand. The conversation, the dialogue, the vocabulary used, it blends beautifully together. Thank you.
Other questions by board members?
I have a, I, maybe it's more of a comment, but I, I will say that the one concern that I have to reply of one of the questions was that there was another survey coming out for June 6th.
No, I'm sorry. It's the same one. It is for our Title I parents.
Yes.
It's the same one. But we're not going to, they're not going to have internet at home.
Yes.
So we bring them into the school with that interpreter, with the electronics, so they can go online.
So, and I understood that part. My concern is the date.
Saturday.
The date being June 6th.
Uh-huh.
My concern with that is that I imagine that you're wanting to get this approved by the board tonight.
Right.
And yet, we have a survey that's going to be coming out on the 6th.
Well, it's not coming out. This is ongoing. I'm so sorry. The, we've had our car rider parents fill it out. We've had our fifth grade students fill it out. We're going to now reach out to our Title I parents. So it is an ongoing information. It is not a set two-week timeline, we're doing this survey. But we would never get this one demographic group if we did not do it this way. June 6th is their annual breakfast. It's what they're used to, and it's scheduled on the calendar. So we believe that the data we've shown up here, the impact it's made on our school with our faculty and students speaks strongly that the uniforms continue for Coontz Intermediate Schools' leadership.
But your concern is that we're omitting a piece of the population from the survey?
That is my concern. And while I would certainly hope that they would be pro-uniform, because as you know, I am very much pro-uniform, and I actually remember-
They are.
-being practically tackled by the staff and the school improvement team four years ago when they first talked about this.
Sorry.
And, and I, I guess what you're asking is for me to take a leap of faith in that they are in support of this. Again, my concern is that if we're trying to go by survey results and data collection-
Okay.
There's that date that's still hanging out there that concerns me a bit.
Well, we have survey data here.
Okay.
And it is all, when we're going one to 10, or yes to no, every single one of them, 10 is the majority, 10, 8, 9, the yes versus the no. But the, with our Title I families, with their working schedule and their family schedule, that, that's different.
Do you have results from surveys that the Title I families did last year?
Yes.
That you could maybe give me some information with that?
Yeah. I would say that that was about 91 percentile, yes. A lot of them were used to it, coming from their other, coming from other countries. And they're the ones that's wanting to buy Lands' End. So- So, um, they're, they're not the ones that we have a problem with. They, they want that uniform.
Okay. So, so if you had somebody in the community come to you later on and said, why did you admit to this group of demographics? You would be able to supply these results from last year and explain, because I understand the date and that, and that makes perfect sense. But, um, I guess having the availability of those previous surveys to show to people who may, you know, come and ask about, you know, the population that...
We've kept all of our surveys from the past two years.
Okay.
Big, thick file.
Right. And, and I, I will say this too. I appreciate the fact that your school did look at this as a pilot. And when there was some concern about only being able to purchase from one vendor, you guys went back to the drawing table and kind of, you know, made some adjustments, which I, I think was, um, very much a step in the right direction. And my, um, the complaints that I had heard originally were all focused on the one vendor. And so, once that was addressed and taken care of, I personally haven't received, there's been a couple of emails that have come to me, but otherwise overwhelmingly, it's been support. And like you had said, the request has actually been, can we bring this on with us to Valley Springs along with Leader and Me? So I, I do see that, that the support there. I just want to make sure that we are not leaving a group out and that we have documentation to that.
Correct.
And the only other thing that I would suggest, and I, I think maybe it was technical difficulties, but the, um, when you broke it down as to what the plan was for next year, as far as what they could choose from.
Yes.
Um, I, I do, I would like to suggest that instead of just the one color.
We did go three.
Great, okay. And then, um, same with that other option, I think I had emailed you about having that other option for the sweatpants too.
Yes, so everything is navy, white, and gray. Um, I think the, the one specific thing we added this year was that if they're wearing a short-sleeve polo or the short-sleeve PE and, uh, they're going to get cold or something, that the undergarment that they wear is navy, white, or gray.
And you still have those funky pink t-shirts for, uh, PE that all the...
Biggest number-one seller.
Yes, they are. Had a group of, uh, young boys at the first year that thought that they were just going to prove a point and unite and all wear pink t-shirts and...
Oh, yeah.
As, as a rebellion.
Yes.
But they now, now that same group of boys actually enjoys the uniforms as long as they get to keep their socks. I did get that specific request.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. There, there's something.
Well, one final question, and you alluded, a, a couple of places during your comments tonight, you were talking about the surveys. At one point, you said it was, um, the numbers were low as far as getting just voluntary responses to surveys.
Yes, sir.
Do you have numbers? I, I know you're, you said 91% a moment ago.
Okay.
But 91% of 20 people would be roughly, what, 18 people, I suppose?
Right. And that was from last year's Title I group.
Good, yes, ma'am.
I think the largest group we had last year was 130, and, and we trapped them. And that was a 70/30 split. We've had 48 that have come in, and that has been also 60/35, 60/40, 70/40, around there. So...
So, fair to say, it's less than 25% of the, of the population that students have responded. I guess beyond that, though, uh, I have two parents here and their young daughter who came tonight and had very positive remarks to say, I've, as Amy, I've heard some things, just, you know, other things. But I don't hear that outcry. I don't hear anyone here. And I think that speaks more volumes maybe than the survey data because, uh, it's just because of the numbers and response. And I don't know if ever it would, you know, there's a way to try to influence that and get all the total community of Coontz to respond. That would be tough. But, but in any event, I, I think tonight's comments, I think your presentation, I think it all is, was very positive.
I think it's important that we consider anecdotal data because these are living, living beings. And I have not had one parent, I can definitely say this year, and I'm thinking about last year, that has come to me, sat down with me, and did not like the uniform. And my door is wide open. So, we, you know, I appreciate that and I want to put that out there. And there's, you know, right now, we've got a sixth-grade girl that is very concerned about going into middle school. What am I going to wear? You know, how am I going to fit in? And that's a concern. So our goal was that during these two years, it would give these children time to mature, to learn more about themselves with the Leader and Me, and be ready for. She'll be more ready than she thinks she is once she gets into seventh grade.
Right.
Question?
Uh, not a question, but I have some comments. Um, so I grew up being that kid who got made fun of because of what I was wearing. And, you know, I was the free lunch kid and couldn't afford the nice clothes and, and got teased on the bus. And so I was really interested in this pilot initially because I've always thought there was a lot of potential with uniforms. So I've been, I've been paying attention and, and listening, and I have heard complaints from parents and, and just sort of the parent who says, oh, well, most parents like it, but most kids we hear don't like it so much. And, and so I think I have heard more negative than maybe some others. Um, and, and I often look at, at the costs and the benefits. So the cost more broadly than just what is the cost of the actual clothes, but the cost in more general terms. And so I have, I have some real concerns about it, having watched it. I'm really glad that we've done this pilot, but I don't think I will be voting to continue it. And so I just wanted the opportunity to, to share what my concerns are. And I, I do think that, that there are concerns that have not been expressed among parents and kids. And it sounds like most of the survey, surveying has been done of the parents. I don't know how, how much you have from the kids. But, but that's part of my concern too, is that we're being asked to vote on something pretty significant. This is a significant diversion from our policy. And I don't have any data that I'm using to make this decision. You know, one of the things that I really appreciate about our school system is that the staff provides us all the facts so that we can weigh the facts and the pros and the cons and make an informed decision. And what we've seen tonight is a marketing video and some supporters who have come in and spoken really eloquently. But I don't feel like I have all the facts. I don't, I don't have the survey data. I, you've spoken about it in general terms, but I haven't been able to look at it. It's, the survey is not complete. And yet, I'm being asked to make a decision. And so just in terms of the extent to which this is a diversion from our general policy and is kind of an outlier in our system, and the relatively small benefits that I can tell that are really specifically related to uniforms. I mean, at the same time that you're doing uniforms, you're also doing Leader and Me, and we're seeing great results of Leader and Me in schools across the county without uniforms. So it's hard for me to separate out that we can say, these benefits are specifically because of the uniforms. So for all of those reasons, I will be voting against it. And, um, just wanted that to be understood.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have another one. Actually, um, I, I guess I have a question, and I don't know if this would be an attorney question or board or, or whatever, but I, I know, and I believe it actually was in Leader and Me, or it might have been John Barber who said it takes about three to four years to, um, really get, you know, some true data and, and solid results to see, you know, if something is working. Is it possible, because we are discussing this so late in the year, which I wish that we had been discussing this a few months earlier, because especially with that June 6th date, um, is there an option that we could perhaps just extend this pilot for one more year with the understanding that there would be, um, I don't know if we need to do an outside, like, um, outside company for a survey, and I realize there's a cost associated with that, or, or just to get our, our true hard data, like Ms. Mann is, is saying that we do with so many other programs that we have in the system.
And the other data that we have never really been presented is, we were given initially, this is what it would cost, and, and I, in terms of, of buying the uniforms, and as that has changed, and you can buy it from here, and you have to have this, and you have to have that, it's really not clear to me what the actual cost is to a family. And I gather that that's going to vary, but it, it's still, again, that's another place where I don't feel like we have a lot of data.
Yeah, there's not been a motion of any matter. There's just been discussion. So, I mean, the board is free to make whatever motion it wants. It can, if it wants to extend, I mean, this is a non-mandatory program. You can stop it tonight, or you can have a pilot, however long you want to have a pilot.
I didn't know if there was like extra special rules for pilots and that.
No, I mean, it's your own pilot.
Unless you're going to make them.
Yeah, it's your own. So, I mean, that, if that is a motion you want to make, that can be made, or you can continue to have a discussion, but...
This seems to me to say that what we're going to do is, is continue it for one year for, to continue the school policy. Is that...
That's what we are requesting, yes.
Yeah. That the school improvement team has met and that that is their request to, to continue the pilot for another year.
Another...
That's what I read into it.
And I would concur with Ms. Churchill and Ms. McMahon. One year is not long enough to figure out if a program is truly working or if Leader and Me is working separately and the uniforms are working separately, or are we seeing benefits that are crossing?
And, you know, what my heart is saying is, is when I hear you speak, it hurts because you're not taking into consideration the faculty and that daily walk that they have with their children. And to see the success these children are having, standing up for themselves and speaking out in class. I thought that we might have gone too fast with the slide that was showing the cost for Target or Old Navy. My sidekick here. You know, $6 and $7 for one item and the same for the other is, is very minimal. And families spend on, on clothing for school, so this would be, probably be less because they would not have the stress of trying to buy those brand names that the kids feel pressured to purchase.
And I want to make sure you understand that it's, this is not a, a personal, I'm sorry to hear you say that it hurts your heart, because my responsibility here is to make a decision that's best for the school, that's best for the school system. And I do that based on information, and I have incomplete information.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so I hear you tell lots of great stories, but that's, it's just not enough.
Okay. You did not see the cost that was up there, the price?
I, I saw the cost of, of each item, but again, that's just sort of the, a piece of the puzzle to me. And, and so, very good.
Okay. Um, we've been conferring here. We have one more board meeting, um, on the 30th of June, and I've been giving the board a hard time because it's a growing board meeting. It's not going to be a short one. So what we could do, if, if the board is interested, is, um, ask that Coontz bring information, data to us, provide it for us, so that we can peruse it before that June 30 meeting. And, um, then that would give you time to survey your June 6th, uh, meeting and that population and compile all of that. And then we could revisit, we could move this item to the June 30 agenda if that's something that the board would like to do. So, um, what's your pleasure, guys?
What, what's your feel for moving it a month as far as, did you, I, I know that you had, um, at one point, an opportunity for parents to come in when we were doing Lands' End and get measured, and that was like in July. Uh, do you, is that going to create confusion for your families?
We, that was a one-time event. We won't be doing that again.
Okay. So you feel like if, um, I, I guess our parents coming and beating down the door saying, I need to know right now what the, the plan is for uniforms? Or are they like me and they wait till last minute?
I've had two parents ask, yeah. I've had two parents ask.
The other option is that we call the question and we vote on it right now. So, board, give me some kind of feeling about what you want to do here.
And, and I'm still, maybe I'm just didn't read it right, but I thought that we were actually looking to, like, vote on this forever and ever. Amen.
Well, that appears to be what the recommend, I mean, it's your recommendation. Why don't you restate the recommendation as you recommend it?
We were given a two-year pilot, and so we are requesting that we now go to school uniforms. Period.
On a permanent basis or for the foreseeable future?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm as confused as a duck on a frozen pond. So what, help me out.
In the effort to try to move this along, uh, I, I think Cindy's observation is well-founded. Just as I mentioned, the, uh, the validity of the data, the survey, it's such a small number of returns that it, it sort of invalidates, it skews it when you start talking about, 91% say yes, but that's not 91% of the entire body. But like I said, if it were such a, a large issue, I think we would have been hearing more people taking the time to come and present their position from the board.
That's right, and they're not.
And I don't see that.
They're not.
But, but again, I respect Cindy, Cindy's position. And I also think about the validity of the Leader and Me and having uniforms and having all the children basically equal and just making them get a sense of, of belonging, equal footing, and, and really showing what they can do. And then something else you said to me a moment ago, and that was, we're overlooking what the faculty have to say. And those are, that's, you know, we've said in this room, that's where the rubber meets the road. And I think we really need to get some feedback from the faculty as well. So with that said, I think the most prudent thing we can do, at least at this point in time, and we may do something else on June 30th, but I think we need to delay this at least until June 30th to get those surveys back from the Title I families as well. Try to get as many of those as you can.
Well, they'll just be about 21.
That will be great. Get that back. And maybe, I think you also in the driver's seat, get us some feedback, maybe some type of survey data from your faculty. Now, I want to be honest in that information they give back to us as well. And I'd really love to have the entire Coontz community of parents respond. I don't know if that's possible.
I know.
I don't know. Maybe you could do an all-call and say, but I, I don't want to create a mountain out of a molehill, so to speak.
No, I've done that.
Yeah.
I've done that several times.
So, Madam Chair, that's my motion, that we postpone this until the June meeting.
Okay, I think our superintendent wants to enlighten us.
Waltz too is pretty strong language. Uh, let, let me just throw up, Ms. Swanger, help me out with this. I know a few years ago, through communication, we did essentially an auto-call that was a, a survey through an auto-call. Is there potential for us, I know we are absolutely slammed, we've got, you are already two months behind on what's been, been at, but is there a possibility we could look at that option, send it out, resend it to the entire? But I, I think what I'm sort of perceiving is we need some, we need some very clear, direct, concise questions that aren't four questions in one. It has to be very specific because that's what I'm hearing. You want data in front of you, and I think, I, I think you've made a valiant attempt to get data through that method. But I'm not so sure that in today's world, using that, that auto-call, getting that survey, we've had good results in getting high percentages back. And that would, we could also do that and have it back here by, by June 30th. I'm just tossing that out as an option.
And, and that does take it out of the school's hands, which might be more appealing to members of the community who may feel they're on the fence.
Okay, can I do this by consensus?
Um, you may. I mean, there had, the, there hasn't been a motion made.
Right.
Mr. Queen just made a motion.
He made a motion to, to take this off the...
To, to table this until June, June 30th meeting, to get this information back. To table this until June, June 30th meeting, to get this information back at the June 30th meeting. Hopefully, we would have more data, the auto-call, the data from the Title I parents that you're meeting with. And I would even wonder if you could not use the auto-call instrument as a way to survey her faculty. And again, it sort of, it makes it blind, if you will. I suppose that's what the advantage of that is, making it blind, and it's just coming back and it's being tabulated.
Okay. Mr. Queen has made a motion that we move this item to the June 30 meeting, and that in the ensuing time, that we will work toward getting clear data. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do you get that, Kim? Now, we're going to move to the consent agenda. On the, thank you, Ms. Board. Thank you. We didn't move that. We took that off.
The paid lunch. Paid lunch.
Okay. We have one more item on the action agenda, and that is the paid lunch item. Lisa?
Ms. Page.
I'm glad you decided to sit in the front.
I see that. I see school chairs.
Okay, that's good. We'll do that.
Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, I don't have a presentation. It came to my attention that Ms. McMahon would like to ask some questions, and I am here for all of you and any of you that would like to ask questions. The paid lunch equity, just a little bit of background, it is a federal requirement that we have to meet a weighted average, where you take the reimbursement rate and the amount of money that a paid student pays has to equal X amount of dollars, and then your reduced students and the reimbursement that you receive has to equal that amount and then your reimbursement from your free. So there is a calculations that you were given this afternoon to find the weighted average, and the weighted average for Buncombe County is $2.85, and it distributes out for the elementary, intermediate, middle, and high at 10 cents across the board, gives you the $2.85 weighted average. Questions?
Yes, so it's a very simple question. So just basically, we would be increasing all of the fully paid lunches by 10 percent. I know that they're different at elementary, middle, high, but all of them would go, jump up by 10 cents.
10 cents, straight across the board.
10 cents across the board, yes, ma'am. And for, obviously, if free lunch is free lunch, but those who pay reduced rate will stay the same, is that correct?
They will, 30 cents for, oh, well, actually, none in Buncombe County for breakfast and 40 cents for lunch.
40 cents for lunch, and that is not going to increase?
Correct. There's no increase in reduced meals.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure that was clear. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. That was a long walk, wasn't it?
It was okay. Thank you.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the paid lunch equity plan.
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have May 4, 2017, regular meeting, open session, May 4, 2017, special call meeting, the personnel report with an addendum, approval of the 2016-17 facilities report, the CTE local plan approval, renewal of the driver education contract, and the award of the contract for liability property, auto, and workers' compensation insurance.
Madam Chair, question for board attorney?
Sure.
Personnel report, I'm proud to say, contains my daughter. However, I would like to abstain just from the vote on her. Is that doable? Or do I have to abstain for the entire personnel report?
You're going to have to abstain for the entire consent agenda. We can remove the consent agenda.
No, I don't want to do that. I'll just abstain from the entire consent agenda, just to be clear.
Okay. Any other questions for the attorney? I would enter...
I would note that while that is honorable to do that, if you so choose, that is, isn't a conflict.
I understand. I made a point of doing it once when she was first hired. I wanted to do it then. This is the rehire after four years, and I just think it's best if I just abstain from that.
Okay. Do I, did I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention. Kim's got it right over here.
Thank you.
Her fingers are going to town. Information agenda, we have the finance reports and the notification of informal construction and repairs, contracts, and change orders. At this time, I'll announce that the next board meeting is June 30th, which we have made reference to numerous times. It's at 1:30 here in this room. The Board of Education's regular meeting will be held again August 3, 2017, at 6:30 in the Minitorium. And I would like to call your attention to all the graduations, as Dr. Baldwin has done. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd entertain a second.
Second.
Dead ducks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?